Welcome to Perth East Council this nineteenth day of September. I'd like to call our meeting to order if everyone could please bow their head for a moment of reflection. Thank you. Confirmation of the agenda, Ashley has a change.
Yes, thanks Mayor Egits. Item number 7.1.1 is listed as a public meeting. The public meeting was actually held in June, so it'll be moved to item number 8.1.2 to consider just the planning zoning by law approval.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept September 19 agenda as amended. Moved by Amanda, second by Jeremy, all in favor, carried. If you have pecuniary interests, you can disclose that now or as the meeting goes along. We have thirteen items under consent agenda. Is there any item anyone has questions on or they would like pulled? Seeing none, then we have a motion that items 5.1.1 to 5.1.13 is set out on the consent agenda for September 19, 2023, regular meeting of council be received for information and the minutes of the Perth East Library Board, September 12, 2023, be received for information and further, the minutes of September 7, 2023, regular meeting of council be adopted. Moved by Jerry, second by Bob, all in favor, carried. Okay, we will move down to our public meeting. Oh no, sorry, we're skipping, we're delegations is first, sorry, I'm jumping ahead. So we have Chris Dietrich with us tonight, project manager from Dietrich Engineering Limited, and this is about Currie Municipal Drain, and Chris is joining us on the screen. So welcome, Chris, to Perth East, and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. As the mayor said, my name is Chris Dietrich with Dietrich Engineering, and I'm here to present the Currieville Municipal Drain 2023. This drainage report was prepared under sections four and seventy-eight of the Drainage Act, and there is a plan showing there, so that's color coded to kind of allow council to follow along with my presentation here. Basically, this project's been divided up into three parts. There is the main drain open, shown in yellow, the main drain enclosure, shown in orange, and the pole branch, shown in purple. Some history on the drain, the main drain open, shown in yellow, was last constructed by W.E. Kelly and Associates Limited in 1982, and it started from the World Creek all the way to the top end there. And the main drain closed, shown in green, was constructed in 1968. That tiles in good working order and not going to be presented upon today. The purpose of this report is to provide sufficient outlet for the enclosure of the upper section of the drain, shown in orange, and which is on lot 31 concession 13, under section 78, that is, and to provide a new subsurface outlet for lot 33 of concession 12, and that's under section four of the Drainage Act. To provide a sufficient outlet for the enclosure, work must be done to the main drain open, shown in yellow, and that's from the upstream side or the north side of line 49, which is also stationed 1 plus 2, 5, 2. And then we have to clean out that ditch to where the enclosure dumps in at station 1 plus 6, 8, 2. So the total cost of that work, for the work on the yellow main drain open, is $17,200. The next part is the enclosure, the section found in orange there. And basically, we propose to enclose this section of the open drain by means of a tile drainage system. We prepare to install 226 meters of 525 millimeter to 600 millimeter diameter tile, and we propose to install one concrete catch basin and one concrete junction box. We estimate the cost of this project, including filling in the existing ditch, at $37,300. And now the final section of this drain is the pole branch, shown in purple. And basically, this branch consists of the installation of 203 meters of 450 millimeter diameter tile and the installation of one concrete catch basin. No work is done on the open ditch there. And we've estimated the construction cost of that branch going across the one farm at $23,300. So if you take all these costs and add them up together, the total cost of the Currieville Municipal Drain 2023 construction cost is $77,800. And if we were to take allowances and engineering and what have you, contingencies altogether, the total cost of the project is estimated at $134,600. And at this point, I would take any questions from council or landowners that may be in the audience there tonight.
Okay, questions from members of council? No questions, questions from the audience? No? Okay, then we have a motion that council of the township of Perth East receive the presentation from Chris Dietrich, project manager, Dietrich Engineering Limited, Currieville Municipal Drain 2023, parts of lot 32 to 34 concession 12, part of lots 30 to 32 concession 13, and part of lot 30 concession 14, Ellis Ward, Township of Perth East, Perth County, for information. And further, that the quarter revision for the Currieville Municipal Drain 2023 be held in October 17, 2023, at 6:30 PM. We have a mover and a seconder, moved by Amanda, second by Hugh. All those in favor, carried. Thanks, Chris, good to see you, enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no public meetings, we have no public hearings. Our first thing in planning is part lot control application submitted by William J. Keyes Construction, and Punay is joining us on the screen, so welcome Punay, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Egits, and good evening, council members, Mayor Egits. Tonight, I'm presenting to you, oh, and with your permission, I will share my screen. Yes, the property is located principally at 101 to 103 Pugh Street in Milverton. It is within the Keyes subdivision. And there are a couple of others, part lot control applications that are adjacent to this site that we reviewed last year, and this is the third out of four lots that we are reviewing tonight. So this is a one-story semi-detached residence. The area is approximately 709 square meters, and it has a frontage of approximately 18 meters. The owner of the property is requesting that lot 32 in the registered plan 44M-80 be exempted from part lot control to allow for the two dwelling units and surrounding area to be separately conveyable. And the application for exemption from part lot control allows for a lot line to be located precisely along the common wall between the two units in a semi-detached dwelling. So as for the planning policies, Planning Act allows for the part lot control, exemption from part lot control through the municipalities. And when the land is registered, plan of subdivision, further subdivision of land is permitted through this channel. And for the purpose of this application, a reference plan has been provided by the applicant. It shows where the common wall is located on the semi-detached dwelling. Provision policy statement talks about healthy, livable, and safe communities. It talks about establishing development standards for residential intensification or development and new residential development, which minimizes the cost of housing and facilities compared form while maintaining appropriate level of public health and safety. The requested part lot control is consistent with those policies, promoting cost-effective development to minimize land consumption and servicing costs. Milverton Official Plan also, so the site is designated as service urban areas within the settlement areas, and it is within the residential designation in the Milverton Official Plan. Both the county and the Milverton Official Plan encourage different dwelling types or residential designations, and this proposal is also meeting the requirement. Perth East zoning by law, the zoning on the site is R2, and that is medium density development, R2-13, which allows for a semi-detached dwelling. And for the purpose of this application, there is a minor variance that was applied for earlier in the year to request for a maximum lot coverage of 49% instead of 40%. And that was granted in April. So the Perth County Council is a delegated approval authority for bylaws to exempt lots in a plan of subdivision from part lot control within the Township of Perth East. If the Perth East Council proceeds with the adoption of the bylaw, it will be provided to Perth County for approval, and there is going to be two-year to fulfill this exemption. This would conclude my presentation, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, thank you.
Okay, questions from members of council, Hugh?
Yeah, through the ward, through the ward, you've got a raise. Through the mayor. It's just that your interior side yard width is going from six meters down to three meters, and when you had the picture of the houses and stuff like that up there, that's an awful small width if you have to get into the back of those houses or if anything has to be fixed, isn't it? Like, it seems that it's getting extremely close when one building is so close to the other building. Like, if you had to fix a wall or do pretty well anything there, it seems like it would be, you'd have a very hard time doing it. I think, I think, or chief.
Wes? Okay, Wes, you want to follow up with that?
Yeah, second through you, Mayor Egits. I believe my Perth East standards, it is close to, like, closer than what we're used to, but I would say if you go to Brampton or some of the bigger centers, this is, this is the usual with developments in the interior side yard setback.
So it'd be two meters from the wall of the block?
Correct. Yep, in a previous life, I was a bricklayer, actually having to work in some of these tight quarters, putting the veneer bricks on, so it is tight, but it is acceptable.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we have a motion that the council of the township of Perth East receive the report prepared by the planner entitled Part Lot Control Application, D27-PLC-05-2022-PE by William J. Keyes Construction Limited dated September 19, 2023, affecting lands described as plan 44M-80, lot 32, 101 to 103, Pugh Street, Milverton, Township of Perth East, for information. And that council adopt by law 42-2023 and forward to the County of Perth for approval. Moved by Jerry, second by Andrew, all in favor, carried. Okay, and the second item in planning is the zoning by law application by Baker Planning Group for Reed Heritage Homes, Punay, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, with your permission, I will share my screen again.
Sure.
Thank you. So the property located is located on 44 and 54 Mill Street West. We had the public meeting, the joint public meeting for the OPA and ZPA about a month ago, in June, actually. And so now we're coming back for the recommendation on the rezoning application. The application for rezoning is a condition of plan of subdivision 51T-92001. It was originally approved by the Minister of Municipal Uppers on May 1993. It is now extended to June 2025. The purpose of the application is to amend the zoning on blocks 28 and 29. These were land subject to the OPA 13, and the zoning currently is C3-1, and it's going to be changed to R3-2. Also to amend the zoning on lots 30 to 34 and 45 to 46 from R1H to R-3-2, and to also replace the existing R3-2 zoning on lots 35 to 44 and Lattison Court and replace it with a revised medium high-density residential, Milverton residential high-density, which is R3-2 zone, which are all of these ones. The subject property is, the area is approximately 2.2 hectares, and the owner intends to construct a total of 57 bungalow townhouses on the site, and the rezoning application is necessary to facilitate development. The site has an irregular shape, it is adjacent to block 27, which is currently a vacant lot designated for the creation of a stormwater management pond. Both blocks 28 and 29 will have frontage on the proposed Meas Drive and Macbeth's Drive. The site is bordered by medium-density residential on the east side and future development lands to the north. As for the provision policy statement, it is, PPS states that the settlement areas are to be the focus of growth and development, and it encourages development efficient and resilient for land use patterns and growth. And they should be the focus for growth and development in these areas, and density, a mix of densities and land uses are encouraged. As for the official plan policies, it is within the Milverton Service Urban Area and in the official plan of Perth County, and it is designated residential in the Milverton Official Plan. Blocks 28 and 29 went through an official plan amendment to change the designation from highway commercial to residential. And within service urban areas, it is intended that new lot creation will occur primarily through the plan of subdivision process. And both the county and the local municipal councils must be satisfied in regard to matters such as the proposed use, the scale of development, provision of water and sewage services, land compatibility, and site switchability. And the policies with regards to the servicing have been reviewed in detail. The staff at the Perth East, they were consulted, and they have, they provided no specific comments with regards to this application. As I mentioned, there is a residential designation, and also the proposal on this site as general provides a mix of residential types, including single detached, semi-detached, and specifically for this zoning, it will be townhouses, apartment dwellings. And also, the Milverton Official Plan requires development involving large number of dwelling units to be located within a walking distance of the full range of facilities and services in the core or in the areas that are in close proximity to an arterial or collector road. And this proposal satisfies the condition. Now, with regards to the proposed zone, as for Milverton Residential High Density, as I mentioned, the zoning currently on the lands are not similar to this zoning, so they, there is a different design for this site, therefore, the proposed zoning is required to accommodate that. And also to satisfy, to accommodate the condominium form of tenure, the frontage on private roads proposed for the development. As mentioned at the public meeting, the interior side yard is proposed to be reduced and is recognized within this zoning by law amendment from six meter to three meters. And the, it is the opinion of the staff that the proposal is appropriate for the area and with respect to the nature, character, scale of adjacent uses. Although the proposed townhouse development proposes higher density in the area, staff are satisfied based on the location of the development. Being adjacent to the medium density development, the scale of the development is appropriate. And further to that, the single-story townhouses resemble the surrounding forms of low-density development. With respect to traffic, townhouse development will have access to private street, which will have access to Mill Street. And the studies were reviewed in depth at the public meeting, so I won't go into each one of them. I will just make a summary that the traffic impact study conducted by Traffic Mobility found no specific issue with the proposal, but however, the applicant will be required to provide the detailed traffic impact study prior to registration of the draft plan of subdivision. And also, the development will be subject to site plan approval process by the Township of Perth East, so certain aspects of the design will be also addressed at that point. With regards to the compatibility with surrounding properties for the current proposal, again, as discussed previously, noise impact study and air emissions impact study were evaluated, and there seems to be no specific issue with either of them. As for the noise impact study, however, there is stationary noise source from morning thing communication, and because the lack of proper information, and the study suggested a buffer perhaps that could be required, so further study could be required at the site plan stage, and the applicant is aware of that, who is the owner. They are in, they meet the distance for the Milverton sewage treatment, they exceed that distance, so they're compatible in terms of that use as well. And condition number seven of the updated draft plan requires completion of archaeological assessment, satisfying the Ministry of Heritage, Parks, Tourism, and Culture Industries, and the holding provision was to ensure the condition is satisfied. I was provided recently with the document, with the assessment from the agent, and that is why in the report you see the proposed zone will have the holding provision beside it, but since I received it recently, we have amended it so that the zoning, the revised by law will omit that H, and so it will be just R3-2 zone. With regard to the servicing, as I mentioned, I do not have any concern. And as for the notice of public meeting, it was circulated on May 31. The public meeting was held on June 20. I have not received any comments after the meeting from agencies or members of the public. With this, I'd like to conclude my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, thank you.
Okay, any questions from members of council, Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor Egits, just a couple of quick questions, planner Dirk, and the, so we're, looks like from the purpose of the application, we're moving some C3, which I'm guessing is commercial, into high-density residential. Does planning take into account, and I apologize, I just kind of picked up on this right now, reading the background, or does it take into account the loss of employment lands, which are also very important, as well as, is that part of this, part of this process, or have we gone by that, the loss of employment lands?
Thank you for the question. Yes, so in evaluation of this proposal, that was considered, and, thank you, yes, that was hybrid commercial C3-1. My apologies, did I mention that, I just provided the C3-1. But, so this is within the settlement boundaries, and it has been within the, it is registered plan of subdivision. And it was really aimed to be, you know, developed for residential purposes at that point, it seems. And now, through the justification, fine justification that we received, loss of employment land were considered, however, the type of hybrid commercial uses that were, you know, usually are, the hybrid commercial uses are, they require larger areas, and they would be, this area, blocks 28 and 29, that are now residential, would be considered on a smaller site to accommodate those type of, those type of uses. And they would have been also too close to the residential uses that have been already approved for development. So that is the justification for the change of use for the, under the official plan, and also change of the zoning from hybrid commercial.
Thank you for the answer, I'm just, is there any mitigation for that, if that's the right term? Is there a plan to replace those going forward? Or is that something we seek in the future to replace those employment lands, lost employment space? We have a lot of growth, we have a lot of growth, I guess, is what I'm asking, and you want people to work where they live, right? It's a lot of benefits to that, so I'm just kind of building on what I'm, what I'm just thinking here from your answer, but I appreciate it, though I understand it's not really a compatible use. We still have an industrial at the bottom there. So I guess the question would be, is, is there any, going forward, will those lands be replaced in the inventory or from a planning perspective?
Thank you for the question. I, unfortunately, as for the new official plan, if that's what you're referring to, I'm not aware of that decision yet. I know that earlier last year and this year, there were other employment lands that were, that were, you know, that have gone through the planning applications in Milverton and have been added, but in terms of like, if you mean new development, like employment lands, aside from those lands, I'm not aware of that, but I can get back to you on that, if you like.
No, that's fine, I just want to kind of put it on the radar, if that's possible, thank you very much. One other quick question, utilities, so this looks like this is going to be more, I'm not sure how these units are done, whether it's separate services, so how are we for utilities for this intensification? I know it's not part of the report, but we're voting on whether to increase the density, so I'm wondering if that was just part of the, part of the discussion, I guess, with Perth East staff, and is it, is it, is it a good fit?
Thank you, I'm not sure if I'm best suited, or maybe Perth East staff can respond.
I can speak to the question, Punay. Yeah, as it relates to the condo development itself, yeah, certainly with all development within the serviced area, we give consideration to water, wastewater capacity, and yeah, although it is 57 units, we do believe that there's capacity within Milverton to service it from our reviews. Certainly, and just to go back to the previous question, Councilman Cal, as part of the official plan review, the comprehensive review, the ins and outs as it relates to employment lands versus residential lands are part of that comprehensive review. And to Punay's earlier point, the addition of the Percon industrial employment lands actually created a surplus, a significant surplus of employment lands in Milverton based on the comprehensive review. So, yeah, the servicing, we believe, is in place to service the 57 units, and we do believe that there's still sufficient employment lands based on the comprehensive review of the official plan.
Thank you for the answer.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we have a motion that council of the township of Perth East receive the report dated September 19, 2023, prepared by the planner entitled Zoning Bylaw Amendment, D14-Z06-2023-PE, submitted by Baker Planning Group, affecting lands described as blocks 28 and 29, lots 30 to 46 of plan 31T-92001, and Lattison Court 44 and 54, Mill Street West, Milverton Ward, Township of Perth East, for information, and that council approves zoning by law amendment number 206-2023 as revised, including H zone removal. We need a mover and a seconder, moved by Andrew, second by Hugh. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, thanks, Pune. Enjoy the rest of your night. Good seeing you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have new reports for CAO, Clerk, Finance, Public Works and Parks, Building Department by law enforcement, Recreation Community Services and Fire. So now we're at Correspondence. Then we have one item of correspondence from Phil Whittington, Superintendent Commander Municipal Police Bureau, Ontario Provincial Police. So what would you like to do with the information? Receive it for information? Or something else? Okay, so moved by Jerry, second by Jeremy, that we receive the correspondence for information. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, we'll move to council and committee reports. Does anyone, my meeting log was last meeting. Does anyone have a report that they wish to bring forward? Meeting today, Benette, Amanda?
Just a quick update on the Perth East Twinning Committee. So, um, our German guests are scheduled to arrive, uh, very soon. And they will be partaking in the Millverton Oktoberfest. We are hosting them in a couple ways. So, um, I believe that weekend, uh, they are interested in seeing some of our facilities. So they will be seeing this building, fire, um, the fire hall, um, the perk and the library, as part of their stay and visiting, um, a local farm. There will be a celebration, um, and a ceremony with the two mayors, with Rhonda and, uh, the mayor from Nerristheim as part of our twinning friendship. And that'll start at five thirty on October the seventh. Tickets are twenty dollars in advance to participate in Oktoberfest. And for, um, for council's information and for those listening, some interesting information is that Oktoberfest was actually celebrated, um, in the seventies and eighties in Millverton. And then it took a break in, um, eight, in eighty nine. And then it resumed again in night, in two thousand sixteen. And so, um, it's really exciting that they're coming back. So there's thirty plus folks from, uh, the band that's going to be, um, joining us and playing, um, that night. And there is also, but there's a total of sixty guests coming from Germany. Uh, we have people in the community that are hosting a number of these visitors. I encourage you guys to come if you're able to and bring your friends. Um, and there'll be lots of good Bavarian food. And, um, Jerry is going to be emceeing, um, the special ceremony. And it'll be a lot of fun. There is also going to be a CAG, uh, official opening too with our, uh, other dignitaries, including our MP and MPP. So that's, uh, the update.
And who do we get tickets from? Do you have tickets?
They will be able to be purchased online and a news release is going out to media tomorrow. So we'll be starting to promote that.
So online through?
It is, I'll send around the link.
Okay, perfect. Good. Okay, Hugh?
Yeah, on Sunday, Brockston had their annual meeting and, uh, they had a lady come talk about the farmettes. So in World War Two, there was a lack of manpower on the farms. So they got, uh, I think it was fifteen to eighteen year old, mainly girls from the city to come work on the farm. And she gave a very, uh, interesting story of a lot of them. And, uh, most of them, uh, considered that, uh, the best summer of their lives that they spent out on farms and stuff like that. So it was, um, very interesting and, um, very informative.
Okay. Hugh, there's actually a book on the farm, there's a book called The Farmerettes. And I think, I know the Blythe Theater was like selling. Is it?
Onion skins and.
Okay, yeah, but it's like based on the stories, yeah.
Most of them worked in the vegetable and fruit industry. Cause mostly around here, there was enough people left on the farms to take a farm. But in those industries, it need, uh, a lot of people to help out at a certain time of year. So it was really quite interesting.
Cool. Okay, anything else? Derek?
Just a quick one. We have the All Wheels Park opening a couple of Saturday or two ago. So, and that's working quite well here and over and across from the perk. And I just would really want to thank, uh, our Recreation Community Services Manager Becky for all the work that she's did on that, as well as, as the community, for the funds they've raised, to the optimists. So that's, that's quite an endeavor for us. So thanks to Becky and your team.
Okay, thanks, Becky. Anything else? Nope, then we need a motion to accept our verbal reports. Moved by Amanda, second by Bob. All in favor? Carried. Excuse me. Then we have bylaws, first and second reading. We have six bylaws. Uh, the first one is bylaw forty two dash twenty twenty three, a bylaw to exempt from part lot control, lot thirty two, plan forty four M, and that was eight point one point one tonight. Bylaw forty three, twenty twenty three, a bylaw to appoint the manager of public works and parks for the township of Perth East, and that is Jake. Uh, the third one is bylaw one fifteen dash twenty twenty three, being a bylaw to levy assessments for the maintenance of Horner's Creek Municipal Drain in Southeast Hope and Northeast Hope Ward, number four, one sixteen dash twenty twenty three, a bylaw to provide for the amendment of the Cameron Branch B Municipal Drain, twenty twenty two, Ellis Ward, and for the collection of the amended assessment. The fifth one is one seventeen dash twenty twenty three, a provisional bylaw to provide for drainage works known as Curryville Municipal Drain, and that was item six point one tonight on our agenda. And bylaw two oh six, twenty twenty three, a bylaw to amend bylaw thirty dash ninety nine, thirty dash nineteen ninety nine, blocks twenty eight and twenty nine, lots thirty to forty six, Lattice and Court, part of plan thirty one T, at forty four and fifty four Mill Street, Millverton, and that was item eight point one point two tonight. So we need a mover and a seconder to have the first and second readings of those bylaws. Moved by Hugh, second by Jeremy. All in favor? Carried. And then third and final reading bylaws is, there's the five of them. Forty two, twenty twenty three, the exempt part lot control, that was, uh, eleven point one point one. I just read bylaw forty three, twenty twenty three, appoint manager of public works and parks for the township of Perth East. The third one, one fifteen, twenty twenty three, the levy assessment for the maintenance of the Horner's Creek Municipal Drain in South and Northeast Hope. Uh, the fourth one, one sixteen, twenty twenty three, a bylaw to provide for the amendment of the Cameron B Branch Municipal Drain. And the fifth one, bylaw two oh six, and that's a bylaw to amend bylaw thirty dash nineteen ninety nine. And that has to do with the, um, blocks twenty eight and twenty nine and Lattice and Court, uh, part of the Reed Homes, uh, again, on council's agenda tonight. So we need someone to move that third and final readings, Jerry and Bob. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, we do not have a closed session. Do we have any notice of motions? Any new business? Hugh?
Yeah, no, it's just been brought to my attention that in Shakespeare, at the, uh, Optimus Hall, and that the, uh, the paving in the lot is getting a little rough. And that, uh, there's an accessibility thing now because we have the track there. People are in wheelchairs and stuff like that. The pavement doesn't join both sides. There's a part there that is still gravel, uh, in the lot. And so I was just wondering if that could be put on for, uh, the staff to look at. If they're doing paving or anything in the area to at least, uh, look at possibly finish paving the lot and checking the pavement that's already there.
Okay, do we need a motion? You want a motion for that? Or just take direction?
Sure, it is direction to staff.
Okay, so direction to staff, staff will look into it. Okay. Everyone okay with that? Okay, so everybody's heading on, so yes, okay, good. Any other new business? Any announcements? And nope, then we need the confirmatory bylaw. So that is that bylaw number forty four dash twenty twenty three, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the township of Perth East at its regular meeting held on September nineteen, twenty twenty three, be read a first, second, and third time. Moved by Amanda, second by Hugh. All in favor? Carried. And the last meeting of, or motion of the night is that we adjourn at seven forty. Moved by Jerry, second by Amanda. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, everyone. A good meeting, a short meeting, but.